You got five minutes, do whatever you want with it. She's an anchor, she knows how to fill time.
Did you know that I used to say, how did you know that?
Yes, yeah.
Hello, everyone, thank you so much for joining us, I know that you guys just started coming in Zoom and also via Facebook, so thank you so much for joining us, I know that we have a few people here behind the scenes as well that you guys cannot see, but we want to thank you for joining us here at the forum run by me. I'm Angelina Salsito, here's what I'll do, since we have five minutes, I'll do my little spiel and my little introduction. I'm Angelina Salsito, I'm a reporter in an acre for Tampa Bay here in the area. I've been here for approximately two and a half years, almost three, I'm very close to my anniversary here, so I'm excited to be doing this on nothing on myself. My family is in public, so doing this is something that means a lot to me and I'm very excited to have you guys get to know the candidates that are here running for your city council members for seat four and seat five. And hope that you guys take the opportunity to vote when it comes time to vote on March 15th. So, I will give you guys more time for you guys to come in, but these candidates are very excited to speak to you all, let you know what they have to offer, how they plan on taking the race, you know, what they're going to do if they're elected to the Latino community and how they'll make sure that things are equitable for long run. So, happy to have you all in front of me here in the room. Hello. There's a few people here, I know that there's probably a bit more online, but we're excited to thank you guys for being here as well. But it's gonna be good, also, we are at the Hispanic Outreach Center. So, here in Clearwater, if you guys have been here before, this is a key part of the Hispanic community and Latino community in Clearwater. So, this is where we are today, it's important for us to hold this here, obviously, we want to make sure that we do some outreach to the almost 6,000 of you that are registered here in Clearwater. A fun fact too about Latinos in this community, not just this community, but all over Tampa Bay. We tend not to vote when it comes to elections that are physical and they're just not presidential election. Why? Because we actually don't know who the candidates are. We may not even know that it's happening, and a language barrier also tends to play a role as well. So, that's a part of the reason why we're doing this, because we want to make sure that you know who's running for office right here at home. Because that's something that's extremely important for you guys to know and to know what's going to be happening in your own community, not just the presidential election. Things that happen here at home are just extremely important for you to, you know, I don't know, I guess it's going to affect you more directly than your presidential election would. So, forums like this, obviously extremely important, and we hope that those of you, the almost 6,000 of you that are registered here in Clearwater, will let your voice be heard on March 15th, because that's why we're here today. And that's really what they're looking for as well, is their support in any capacity, wherever you guys decide to go with. So, we want to make sure that you guys get out on March 15th. Again, this building is really important, if you haven't been here in Clearwater, I urge you to try to do that. So then you can get to know what's here in your own backyard and in your community. Yeah, I think you guys will glean and learn a lot from the forum that we're going to have today, so. And I'm like looking straight at the camera, I forget that you guys are here too, sorry, I might not look at you all. But it is six, so maybe Jessica or Azalee, do you want me to start to all? You can tell me. Want me to start, because it's six?
Yes.
Do you want to vote for it, anything on Zoom that we need to?
The instructions for how to get to Spanish interpretation.
Okay, cool, yeah, so that is very important.
Maybe you could say in Spanish real quick, because Justin.
Yes. I think it's a little word. But that's something that is extremely important to highlight, is that this is also going to be broadcast in Spanish. Oh. Because I was killing time.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. So. Okay, so, this is the candidate forum run by me, we're officially starting now, for those of you that are logging in, and for those of you that are going to continue logging in, thank you so much and welcome, I'm Angelina Salsito with Tampa Bay. You have your candidates here for the city council member, seat four and seat five. You guys are going to get to know them in just a little bit, they will introduce themselves. But there are going to be a little different portions of this candidate forum that we're going to go through. So, very first portion that we're going to do is introductions, but before we do that, I want you guys to know and remember that this is also being broadcast in Spanish, because that's important, I know that the language barrier sometimes is a little bit hard for people to digest information. So, if you're on Zoom, you can make sure that you turn this, there's a little globe that you'll find on the bottom, if you click on that, it'll let you switch the language, so then you'll hear our interpreter that's actually translating for each of these guys and for myself as well. So, that is something that you guys will remember to do, we're putting in the chat right now, a little blurb that will show you how to do that as well, and if you have any questions at all throughout this entire event, just make sure that you write them down in the chat, if you have any questions for the candidates themselves as well, throw those in the chat, we'll try to get to those towards the end of it as well. So, we're going to get started, we're going to do the introductions with these candidates. They are going to have a minute and a half to introduce themselves to you all, and what we're going to start with is seat number four. So, this side of the room is what you want to pay attention to, we're going to start with Miranda Douglas.
Thank you, Angelina, and thank you to the Hispanic Outreach Center for hosting us tonight. Again, my name is Miranda Douglas and I am your candidate for seat four, and I like to say I'm not your typical candidate. I am from the neighborhood, I'm for the neighborhood, I did not come from a professional politician background. I'm just like you, I'm a concerned citizen and I want to step up and represent the community. I have served on several boards here in the city, including our Green Advisory Board, the Clearwater Arts Alliance, the Community Police Federation panel, and a few others, all focused on making sure that we have a quality of life here in Clearwater that we can really be proud of. And I'm looking forward to serving you on the city council and making sure that your voice is heard, your concerns are listened to, and I can be an advocate for you in the community. And you can vote for me, Miranda Douglas, for seat four, visit me online at Miranda for Clearwater, and I look forward to working with you.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here and tuning into this tonight, this is very important, we talked about this before, being involved and knowing your candidates that are running for these two positions on your city council. My name is David Allbritton, I am your sitting council member here in seat four and I'm running for reelection. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised here in Clearwater. My kids were born and raised in Clearwater and I have grandkids here now. I was a contractor for 37 years, retired about five years ago, and decided that I needed to give back and do something for my community, so I ran for council. Leading up to council, probably the last 22, 23 years, I've been involved with the city on different boards, from code enforcement, downtown development board, charter review committee, business task force, and the Clearwater Community Development Board before I got on council. So, what I'm looking for from you today is a vote for reelection on March 15th.
Well, good evening, my name is Gary Lee, I'm running for seat four also, used to find votes. You can find out more information by looking at Gary Lee for seat four, I use the same thing for my Facebook, my email, and my website. So, it's Gary Lee for seat four. A little bit about myself, I've lived here in the city of Clearwater for about 30 years. I graduated with a bachelor of science in economics, political science, and mathematics. I have managed people home and abroad. One of my last assignments, I had people that were in six different, five different continents that I had to work with, with all kinds of different languages. So, it made an interesting task for me. My platform is, I think we need to make some changes, we need to think about, more about the citizens. We need to get the citizens involved, we need to make changes, move forward, add value. In summary, one of my strongest aspects is I'm a good listener and I'm a problem solver. Thank you, Gary Lee, for seat four.
Now, we're going to head to the other side of the room, if you guys do pay your attention there, this is for seat five.
Buenas noches, me llamo Lina Tishera, yo soy habilitante portugueses de Iberia. No, hablo español muy bien, pero esta noche voy a probar algunas oraciones. Soy una mujer apasionada viviendo soy gusto para servir. I am Lina Tishera, and I am the daughter of Portuguese immigrants. Despite only having fifth grade education, my parents worked so very hard and they prospered. I was raised in a Catholic and traditional home, and I'm the first in my entire family to attend college. My parents did me right, they passed on their values, their faith, and their work ethic, and I in turn did that to my children. One of the things that I value the most is servicing my community. So, the last nine years, as my children grew older and eventually left, I focused on doing what I could to this city. Through the work of many organizations, including city leadership and city staff, I have been able to have firsthand knowledge of some of the challenges that this city faces. I am asking you tonight to have the privilege to serve you, thank you.
My name is Jonathan Wade. And I am a pastor, I'm a husband, I'm a father, and I'm a community activist. I was going to say capaz. But, what I, what I, why I want to run for city council and who I am is, I'm a person that is born and raised in Clearwater, been in Clearwater my entire life. I went through elementary, middle school, high school here, took some time off, went to St. Petersburg College as an adult. Three years part-time, working full-time, got my AA and AS degree in human services and alcoholism. Matriculated over to USF, got my bachelor's in social work, and then I went back a year later and got my master's, it took three years in social work. I graduated with honors at the top of my class, I've worked with Worknet Pinellas, I've worked with the DA as a social worker, GS 12 social worker. I was the executive director of, actually, the center manager for Worknet Analysis, which is the works program, and the executive director of my own nonprofit program that I founded in Clearwater. And it's currently the house where I house the Democratic Party, the rent space for my office.
Hola, me llamo Aaronzito, y hablo español también. Alright, my name's Aaron, I'm 41 years old, my wife Heather and I have been married for 19 years. We moved to Clearwater 16 years ago when we were having our first daughter. We have three daughters now, all in middle school and high school. I live right next to Crest Lake Park and I'm one of the directors of our Skycrest Neighborhood Association. I'm running for council because I want the interests of our neighborhoods to be properly represented on the council. Three years ago, I represented my neighborhood in a battle that we were having against the developer, and we lost that battle. And it became very obvious to me at that time that the council was not listening to the voters, and they were not listening to even the experts who they paid to advise them. They were working in their own best interests and the interests of their friends and their donors, and I decided I wanted that to change. I also want to have a council that will fight back against Scientology's destruction of our downtown. I'm the one candidate best qualified to take on that task. I run an organization called the Aftermath Foundation. We help people who are escaping from Scientology, we get them back to their families and back to their homes. I want a council that will represent our neighborhoods and that will do something about Scientology, and that's why I'm running.
Alright, so now we're going to move into the question and answer portions, we have a few questions that the candidates have got beforehand. This is for full transparency for you guys at home, and we're going to ask a few of them, you guys are going to have two minutes to answer those questions. A reminder that your time dues are going to be coming from Sylvia over here. And then, what we'll do is start side by side, so since we did introductions here first, we're going to start on this side first, but the question is going to be the same for everybody. So, question number one is, as a candidate, how do you see yourself working with the Latinx/Hispanic community in Clearwater so that their voices are included in decision-making? I'm going to let you guys choose which one of you wants to go first.
So, in the last nine years, through the different organizations that I have been in, I have actually been prioritizing this very issue. And I, one of the priorities that I've had was to add diversity to the boards and the organizations that I'm part of. Sometimes as simple as just adding members that have more diverse backgrounds, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And sometimes it's adding key leaders from this community, from the Hispanic community, to have key roles in these organizations, like Neil Ruiz, who is now the treasurer of one of our boards. It is something that I do every day, try to reach out, I think diversity is important, research shows that a team is stronger when there is diversity, when you add the talent pool. So, in a nutshell, I would like to continue what I've been doing, but in a higher capacity with better tools.
If I'm elected to, let me change that, when I'm elected to city council of seat five, what my plans are to work with the Latino X community is to first get to know this center, I, this is my first time here. Just found out after 18 years, this is my first time being here, I have, I am an advocate for Black and Brown communities. In particular, all communities in general, but particularly Black and Brown communities. Because those are the communities that usually get left behind and alienated or not funded properly. And when I asked the questions tonight about funding, I know that those are some of the issues that can happen. So, my job would be to try to get with the director of this center, to work with Santana, who I know from the community, and to have a link in, into the community, and sit and listen to see what your needs are as a Latino community, and see where I can best serve to either steer or direct individuals to the right boards to be on, to advocate for those things. I know that in my community, the soccer fields are used primarily, the football fields are primarily used for football, football in your community. So, I will continue relationships like that and to try to assist you in getting the things that you need financially to take care of the youth and adults population.
So, I think when we talk about working with the Latino community, what that really means is engagement, and it means more than just sending out a message. There has to be an opportunity for, you know, a message to be returned and heard and acted upon. I really think that in-person engagement is the best, most meaningful way to do that. So, whether that's showing up to events or parties or, you know, town halls, town halls is something I've seen happen in the last few months, and honestly, I haven't seen happen in the last 16 years I've lived in Clearwater, but I think they're a great idea. But other than the in-person engagement, I really like the idea of like an email-based newsletter, like what council member Kathleen Beckman has done. She actively encourages people to sign up for her newsletter, she's very diligent and timely in sending it out, and it's a great way to be able to personally send her something back that she can respond to and act upon, so that's something I would try to replicate as a council member.
Okay, we're going to head over to seat four. Yes, I'm hearing the question, so as a candidate, how do you see yourself working with the Latinx/Hispanic community in Clearwater so that their voices are included in decision-making?
So, I think this is a great question, and I can only reflect on who I've naturally been most of my life. And then, always engaging the Hispanic community and the African-American community, and letting them know about different ways that they can contribute their talents and uplift them through public art, through service, through local business support. And I think, you know, really, I'm coming over for dinner, I want you to teach me about your culture, I want you to tell me and explain to me what's important about your community and how I can serve you. Because that's really the way I'm going to be able to really connect and advocate on your behalf in the best way possible. And so, that's how I'm going to do it, and really, I'm going to work through the younger community, my peer group. Right now, I feel like that is going to be the best way for us to really talk about what's coming up. Clearwater is talking about the 2045 plan, and by that time, I'll be in my 50s and my daughter will be in her 30s, and I want to make sure that Clearwater is a community where locals can thrive, that means local families and local businesses across the entire range of our residents.
You know, the Hispanic community has been very important to Clearwater. I've been here a long time and been very supportive of it. You know, the city is supportive of the Hispanic Outreach Center here, and I was involved in the design and promotion of the Festival Core that's being done up on Cleveland Street, and the remake of, redoing of Cleveland Street, which is an extension of our downtown, to include that. And I think it'll be a really good way to support that community. You know, diversity is very important in Clearwater, and you all are a big part of Clearwater. So, I'm going to maintain that we always support this community and do everything we can to help out with, you know, people coming in here and getting comfortable and living in Clearwater.
Well, hello. I've worked with different groups when I was at Verizon, like I mentioned earlier, I had a staff that was on, I think, four or five different continents. I had to adjust for different time zones, different languages. We seem to make it work, we produce the software products that we're supposed to do, they work really well. I bring that business experience or that personal experience to this venue, and so how would I work with that? When I looked at the structure of Clearwater, I said we have advisory groups, we have almost 20 of them right now. And I would suggest that we add a couple more, and I would suggest that they would not be token, that we would add Hispanic advisory group, that it would consist only of Hispanics. I would encourage that group to basically have town halls. On our website right now, a lot of people go, oh, the website. It's still is a repository of a lot of information, and on the website right now, you can sign up for several different email. I would encourage Hispanic people to do that. And that way, we could have both a push and a shove source of information going back and forth. When I looked at that structure, I said, we need to elevate that structure also. Right now, we have one person at, I'm not sure at which level, but anyway, we need to elevate that advisory commission all the way up so that they report to either the assistant city manager or the city manager. When issues come up, you're the first person they should talk to and say, how does this impact you? Town halls, emails, advisements, there you go.
The next question for each of the candidates here. You know, Clearwater, just like every other city of Tampa Bay, continues to grow, and oftentimes, this is at the detriment of pushing out communities of color, particularly Latinx residents, what is your plan to ensure that the community remains diverse? I think we'll start, I know you guys just answered, do you mind going for this one first? Yeah?
I'll go, I have the mic. I really do believe that Clearwater could be a city that fosters growth, you know, a lot of people are attracted to Clearwater for many different reasons. One of them is because of our water, wind, and beaches, the opportunity to have business here, you know, it's a great place for families. And what I think is that we need to be more proactive and making sure that we address housing, and so that we have a mix of housing available for the residents coming in, as well as our domestic residents, making sure that they have the appropriate resources to stay in their home. From what I've learned about the Hispanic community is that they mostly have multi-generational homes. And so, grandma's there, mom is there, uncle and auntie are there, and making sure that, you know, they are comfortably living in their spaces. If it's an older home, having resources available then for to fix up their home or get a wheelchair lift in some cases, just making sure that the city can support that, their growth in their families as well as in their community. And also, too, making sure that we have a transportation system that really helps residents move throughout the city. I know that a lot of the community car pools or even rides their bikes to work, so making sure that our roads are up to par and our bike lanes are safe so that they can use it as a mode of transportation is really going to be key to making sure that the city is working in tandem with the Hispanic community and not pushing them out of their, their homes and their places that they live and work.
So, Miranda mentioned public transportation, I'm on the PSTA board and also a member of the Ford Pinellas, which is our land planning organization. And since we're a, we, we're completely built out in Clearwater, we, when we plan developments, we need to plan developments with public transportation that goes along with it. One of the things that I see that we're very lacking is affordable housing, I think that'll help. We have a project right next door that's going in at the old fire station that is going to be affordable housing, and we've got three other starts that, just in this downtown area, that I think will help. You know, we have a big service industry here, but we don't have a lot of housing that can, that people can live in that support that service industry. And so, we're working hard to make it more affordable to people to live in Clearwater and thrive in Clearwater. And we're also, one of my biggest pushes was to get an intermodal center here down on Myrtle and Court Street, because the bus station we have downtown Clearwater is the second busiest one in Falls County, and it is almost 50 years old. So, that's something that's going to happen in the next couple of years, we're going for a race grant with federal government, and we hope to see that come through this summer.
Okay. Once again, if we look at the structure of the city, we have the Clearwater. Anyway, it's a collection of homeowners associations, the CRC. And that group basically tries to get all the homeowners together throughout the community, I think there are 64 in the community, they've got representation of 32. What I would suggest to answer this particular question, again, the homeowners really need to band together. If they don't have an HOA, create one. Join the CRC, that way, when things begin to happen in the neighborhood, there's an immediately, there's, there's a, an avenue where you can communicate to the rest of the city what's going on. People can't buy your property if you don't sell it. So, if you're worried about being pushed out and you realize that somebody's coming into the neighborhood, rather than them approaching you one at a time, you go to your organization, your organization says, oh, we didn't realize that, I didn't realize you had an offer like that. And you can immediately then begin to band together. You've got to be organized, you've got to volunteer to be in that group. And that will keep things from happening like down at Sunset Point, Nedwater, where the neighbors got together a little too late. And on that corner, I think it's a seven or eight story condominium that's going to be built there. And one of the comments that I heard one of the council members or somebody close to it say, you know, if they'd have been a little bit better organized, we probably could have converted that. Gary Lee?
Gary Lee, isn't she on time every time? Okay, would you guys like the question repeated? No, yes you would, okay. So, the question here would be, Clearwater continues to grow at the detriment of pushing out communities of color, particularly Latinx residents, what's your plan to ensure that the community remains diverse?
So, let me be blunt, the Hispanic and Latino community is a hard-working community. And Clearwater's economy is heavily reliant on the service and hospitality, and it would be nothing without the Latino and Hispanic community to support it. So, the least we can do is provide workforce housing, the very community that we depend on. The logistics is complicated and it's challenging, but that doesn't mean we stop. We need to identify sites for affordable housing or workforce housing, we need to implement programs to incentivize those initiatives. We also would like to, I would like to continue to work with the Economic Department of Clearwater to offer incentives for first-time homeowners, and these are one of many things that we need to do And these are one of many things that we need to do to at least treat the community that has helped us so much in being what we are today. But it is very important that we engage with organizations and community leaders within your community to understand your needs correctly and have you engage and we have to hear your voices. Because what works for one community will not work for another. So I would like to continue to work with Centro de Apoyo hispana or Outreach Center and other organizations like this. Because not only can they effectively communicate my needs or your needs to me, but what options are available to you. And they can be a great contrast.
What I would do to work with Hispanic communities to keep them housed, and I think about, again, black and brown communities. In my neighborhood, a lot of the folks rented property with a lot of rentals. So I would imagine that there's a lot of rentals in the Hispanic community. So what I would do is I would work with, again, this Outreach Center and other groups to connect them with first time home buyers programs, to look at opportunities to, to, to clear up any credit discrepancies or anything and to have some liaisons that can bridge the communication gap, to build some trust that, that folks will go and actually be willing to sit down and talk and share their finances. You know, people sometimes don't want to let people know their business. In my neighborhood, people, if that's the way my folks work. So I would be willing to work with individuals to try to bridge some of those gaps. I think there needs to be some kind of cap on the rent. Like the rent is going out of the roof. And poor people can work hard all their life. Not to say that Latinos are poor, but in my neighborhood, a lot of folks are hardworking, like my grandmother, who worked her whole life and never made more than $10,000. She worked every day, several different kinds of jobs. But she was able to buy a house. She was able to own a car. It was not a new car, but it was a running car. And she was able to achieve her portion of the American dream. And when she died, she was able to leave me $10,000. So I know hardworking people can, can make this happen. Thank you.
So what this question is really asking about is gentrification. And what can we do about gentrification? You know, when you raise property values and rents in a neighborhood, you know, the question talks about communities of color being pushed out. You know, that is a function of the socioeconomic force when property values go up. So it seems to me, in some ways, that process seems inevitable. But if there's anything the city council can do about it, it seems to me that the best chance we have of keeping people in the communities they're already in is to help people in these communities who rent become homeowners. And I think that echoes a little bit of what Mr. Wade was talking about here. In fact, at last night's forum, you know, Mr. Wade told the story. Many years ago, he was able to get down payment assistance through a program from the city so that he could then purchase a home from a bank. You know, if we want people to be able to remain where they are, we have to give them a piece of the pie. And giving them a piece of the pie is making it easier for them to become homeowners in the communities that they currently are renters in. I do not know how much power the city of Clearwater currently has to offer down payment assistance for affordable housing. I haven't even heard it mentioned in the conversation until last night. But it seems to me that if we as a council have any power to prevent gentrification from happening, that's where it would lie and that would be worth prioritizing.
All right, next question for you guys. Latino businesses have been most impacted by COVID-19. Those sectors include hospitality, retail, transportation, construction, and seasonal work. What efforts would you take to provide relief to those that have fallen on hard times?
So I was one of those small business owners that were shut down with COVID. I used that opportunity to help my fellow small businesses. And I was appointed to the COVID-19 Business Recovery Task Force. I was the only person of different ethnicity on that board, and I was the only small business owner. And I fought tooth and nail with much resistance to have the grant awarded for small businesses with less than five employees. I used my relationships throughout the community to gain support. And I fought, and I fought. And I'm very proud to say that the COVID-19 Recovery Grant was granted to all businesses of one employee, including the owner. So that is something that is very relevant to me, something that I care passionately about. I have also, over the last five years, assisted small business owners of Hispanic heritage through the permitting process and grants and getting different incentive plans, like Tequilas with Elizabeth. That's just one example of downtown. We need to help each other and we have to be assertive. We don't have to only just wait for someone to call us. We need to be involved. I have knocked personally on 5,400 doors and all 5,400 received my cell number. I am accessible and I will help, and my history has proven it. So I would like to continue to do that in a bigger scale.
This is, this is issue with COVID and finances and trying to help people recoup from their businesses. And there are some, some, some small business associations that sometimes people don't know how to access. So as a council member, I know the council can't pay for everything. We can't be all things to all people. But the information that we do have and the resources that we can bring to bear as a council, like the CDBG grants and allowing people to have access to those, those are like once a year. But making sure that the, the community gets the information so that they can apply for those grants and letting them know about the Small Business Association that can, that can help you learn, get loans and get the PPP grants, those kind of things, money that doesn't have to be paid back. And linking them with social services that, and as a social worker, that's what I do. I network, I know systems. So I can navigate systems to give people to the right handoff so that they can get the services they need, whether it's from the state or whether it's from the county or whether it's from the city of Clearwater. Sometimes we don't have access, we don't know about it. If you don't know, you can't apply. And basically, that would be what I would do.
So I am admittedly going to punt a little bit on this question because I just personally don't feel the question itself is based entirely in fact. And what I mean by that is Florida is wide open for business. Florida, we've been open for business for over a year and a half, close to going on two years. COVID mandates ended here a long time ago. Clearwater has actually thrived during this time thanks to the differences between how open we are here and how closed the rest of the country has been. So I didn't prepare any other flashy answer. I knew this was one of the questions that, that might come up. But because the question was specifically, what are we going to do for businesses that are struggling due to COVID? I just, I just don't feel it applies in part of the time. So that's my point.
Okay. We look at Maslow's triangle. We say, what's the most important thing here? People have to have food, water, and shelter. And then other things add on to that. We have plenty of water, water is not a problem. Food and shelter is the problem. How do we solve that for those that have been affected by COVID? The federal government and some state locals try to do some of that to some degree. What do we need to do here in Clearwater? We've already got a little church just off of Myrtle where people who have no homes have a place to sleep at night. Whether that's sufficient or not, I'm not sure. But we need something like that where people can be sheltered and come in from the cold and exist. Along with that, we know that, I, I, I think that we have to come together as a community. I keep saying I'm for the, for the people, but it's the people who make up the community. And you have to come together and you have to say, so what can we do? What is our concern? And I, I think of many times I've grocery stores and restaurants and everything. Many times they have foods that are left over at night. And I was in one community where they took all the labels off so that they couldn't be sued or anything. And they basically packed up food and they took it down to a center just about every night so that nobody went hungry. And I think that's the most important thing. Financially, the city is limited. The city does have some funds. The city does have some emergency funds set aside to help people in distress. We need counselors to help people know how to get that information and how to apply for those things. And so I, I think we've got work to do. One of my little things is we can do better. We've done good, but we can do better.
Okay. You know, Clearwater is not really in the social business. I mean, most of the social programs come from, come down from the top, federal government, state government, county. Clearwater does have a limited budget for about a quarter million dollars to help people that need help. And we have a lot of programs through the city, in the city, through other municipalities that we can help people in distress here. But, you know, we're in a good time right now. People are looking for workers. The city is looking for workers. I know a lot of the businesses that I go to are looking for workers. So if you get out there and look, you'll find a job. And if you need assistance, come to the city and we can direct you to where you can get the best provisions, either through the county programs or the state.
So when I read this question, it kind of brought me back to where I was during COVID. I'm also a small business owner and I had to pivot during those times. My business is top notch. It's a marine services network. So I do things from boat charters to small boat repairs to whatever else you need. And so I got my captain's license at the end of last year. And certainly on the Marine Advisory Board, I was really looking for an opportunity to push through this idea of economic development, local economic development, which meant we need to hire from within the community. We also need to identify and partner with local contractors in the community. And at the beginning of my campaign, where we were doing these endorsement interviews, I met with the Clearwater Chamber of Commerce. And I noticed that they had some programs called Clearwater Young Professionals or Achievers. And again, it reminded me of, when I went to USF to get my business degree, I kept it in my heart that I wanted to get my degree because I was tired of seeing businesses fail. And so during the COVID times, I live right here off of Keene and Sunset Point. So Drew Street is my Hispanic food market. I go all up and down Drew Street and I check out all the restaurants. And I made sure to spend money with them. I made sure to ask them, you know, if there's anything I could do to help you, whether that's bringing more people in, whether that's ordering larger orders, you know, do some catering, let me know how I can help you because I don't want to see this business get lost in the shuffle. And I think what the city can do is provide more dedicated mentorship, peer-to-peer mentorship, whether it's from retired CEOs or, you know, young adults that are really committed to making sure businesses have success here in Clearwater.
Next question for you all. The Hispanic Outreach Center's mission is to build strong families, support Hispanic youth to be successful in school and attend college and educate our diverse community. How can you support them and amplify their message to support our community? I'll start on this side.
Well, we do support the Hispanic Outreach Center. And I think the city is getting involved with more programs. I could tell you this, with our new city manager that came in September, he's looking at the overall layout of the city and, and how we need to communicate with our different neighborhoods. And, you know, back in 2009, the city did a big cut of personnel because, you know, if you remember, we got hit. I mean, everything kind of hit, the ban and, 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 you know, we were having a real budget crisis to survive in the city and keep things going. So a lot of people got cut. And at the time, we had a couple of neighborhood liaisons that worked outreach in the community that had to get let go. And it's already 2022 and we don't have them back. And one of our problems is we have a shortage of workers in Clearwater. We need to add more full-time employees. So one of the things the city manager wants to do is bring on four full-time liaisons to go out in the community and see what needs, you know, bring back to the city on what needs to happen and how we can be more supportive in our community. So be look on the lookout for that. I think you'll see that before the next budget year. And something that's very important to all of us up here is supporting our neighborhoods and getting people what they need. So that'll be happening probably in the next few months.
Diversity, we embrace it, we talk about it, we say it's a good thing to do. And many times, that's as far as it goes. So, so what, what we need to do is put the rubber to the rug. We need to rely upon people to communicate to our government. Because we look to our government as a focus point, as a focal point, to lead and guidance throughout this community. When I looked at some of these advisory boards, I know I've mentioned that before, but some of them met once a quarter, some of them met once a month. And they met for 90 minutes. And if we're serious about this, and if you really want to be involved, then we need to push for a Hispanic Advisory Board. Elias is a, is a good person to begin with that. And to look towards saying, what can we do? We need to get that organized, it needs to be visible, and it needs to be active. We need to let people know what's going on in the Hispanic community. My wife and I, we live in countryside and we're, we're not that far away from Drew Street. But we basically don't know anything about. We have to go through a lot of extra steps to find it out. That should not be, again, I'll mention our, our website. We have a good website. It's full of resources. So what we need to, and we have a news section. If we had this advisory board, this advisory board should basically be posting stuff on there all the time, letting us know, not only the Hispanic, but there are multiple ethnic communities here in Clearwater. Diversity is good. You need to embrace it, but you need to know what's happening.
Okay, so Hispanic Outreach Center's mission is to build strong families, support Hispanic youth to be successful in school and attend college and educate our diverse community. How can you support them and amplify their mission?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I answered this appropriately. So the three pillars of my campaign are relate, educate, and advocate. I am a young mother. I am just 31 here. And like I said before, I'm a concerned citizen, just like many people here in the community. And so I feel like what's going to be most important with connecting with the youth and their education is helping them understand how local government plays a part in their daily lives. And this goes from making sure the trash comes on time, making sure our roads are up to par, making sure that you understand what the city council has the capacity to do for you as well as making sure that you are involved in the conversation. And so that's what I'm really looking forward to doing is being an educator, whether it's learning from you about what's important to you and also explaining to you all how we can work together as your representatives on the city government. And then, of course, I'm going to advocate for you. I'm going to make sure that your concerns are heard and appropriately addressed on the council so that we can move forward. When I was in high school, you know, they came and they got us signed up to vote, got us registered to vote. They didn't tell us about, you know, which party to pick, but they also didn't explain to us that voting starts at the local level. You cannot wait until the presidential elections to expect some change. As I was explaining to Brandon a little bit earlier, you have to identify your partners at the local level because they are going to create this chain of change. because they are going to create this chain of change for you. So it starts here in the city, it moves up to the county, the state, the federal congress. You have to identify your chain of change. And I want to be that representative of diversity and inclusion and engagement for you because that's how we're going to move forward in Clearwater. And that's how we're going to make sure our voices are heard all the way up until the presidential election.
I have been honored and blessed to have worked with the Hispanic Outreach Center on various projects with Jekni. And their mission statement really resonates with me because it brings me back to my childhood. I was that little girl that went to the bank with the parents to translate. I was that little girl that brought their aunts and uncles, the doctors, to translate. I opened my, my parents' email, balanced their checkbook. I was that little girl and I understand the challenges that come with that. So if or when, I am blessed to be next councilwoman, it will be part of my very fabric to always consider diversity. I will not be able to ignore it because I will be turning my back on my history. It will be turning my back on my family and what we've achieved. And it is organizations like the Spanish Outreach Center that help my family assimilate and educate. And that's why I was the first to graduate from college, because of organizations like Spanish Outreach. I am the product of what this center wants to achieve.
I think that just my presence here tonight is speaking to that issue. I've been that youth. I, I come from a community where it's been disenfranchisement, where there's been isolation, where there's been racism. And I, I, I hesitate to use that word, but we're in a very hateful time right now. We're still a very divided city. Even tonight, as we sit in the Hispanic Center, Outreach Center, what I can say is that we get pitted against each other because the branch that you go for, for Family Center, is directly the same branch that people in another community that, that looks different is going for. So it seems like black and brown people are pitted against each other, so we don't come together. I would like to bridge that gap. I would like to be able to speak directly to that issue and be able to, not, not assimilate, but to be able to truly integrate and work together, reach across aisles, to be able to support education because youth are our foundation. If we don't train up the children in the way that they should go, then we're in big trouble. So we have an obligation to, to train young people. We have an obligation to make excellence. My teachers, as, as a black student, told me I had to be ten times better than my white counterpart just to be considered equal. They didn't say that to be mean, they said it because it's the truth. You know, if you, all things considered, two people come to the table for the same job and one looks like one person, one looks the other, and they don't get the opportunity based on the color of their skin. It's time out for that. So I'm going to advocate for a, a change, to be able to work with diverse populations and to be able to speak truth to power. But there's no sense in beating around the bush and saying what everybody knows is happening.
So the question is basically, how can the city help the Hispanic Outreach Center accomplish its purpose? And its purpose is very much centered on improving quality of life of Hispanic families. And I think one thing that is helpful for us to remember is that members of the Latino Hispanic community live in all of Clearwater's neighborhoods. They don't just live in one neighborhood and they exist on the entire spectrum of the socioeconomic scale. And, you know, so other than the city directly helping provide funds to the Hispanic Outreach Center, you know, it seems to me that, you know, one of the things the Hispanic, the Hispanic community is really known for is having big, strong, close families. And anything Clearwater can do to improve the quality of life for families in neighborhoods is something that's going to, you know, not, not just inadvertently help the Hispanic Outreach Center accomplish its purpose of increasing quality of life for fam, for Hispanic families. I mean, even talking about things like making neighborhoods more family-friendly, focusing on beautifying neighborhood parks, putting in more dog parks, more walkable neighborhoods, they seem like kind of broad spectrum items, but they really do, in a way. It, it is a way that the city government can help the Hispanic Outreach Center accomplish its purpose for Hispanic families.
Okay, so you guys were all good, you kept us on time. So now we're going to move to the next portion of everything, which is going to be the closing arguments. A reminder, if you have a minute, basically, to speak to the Hispanic community and give them your direct message of, of what you would like them to know. Obviously, voting March fifteenth is, is the date that everybody can go out, send just a message to them and your closing remarks. Which side would we like to start off? I'll let you guys choose. What do we think? Oh, David, okay.
All right, I'll go first because, you know, you're living in Clearwater because Clearwater is a great place to live. It's a great, great place to work and it's a great place to play. I mean, we have the best beaches probably in the world here. One thing that people don't really talk about all the time is all the other things that you enjoy in Clearwater are a hundred and nine parks, we have a hundred and nine parks in Clearwater. That's a lot of parks, that's more than any of the municipalities around us have, can't even touch that. We have more libraries in Clearwater. And all parts of the city, not just in one place, but all spread out all over the city. We have rec centers. Every out part of the city has a beautiful, I mean, first-class rec center. You know, Clearwater is very, we think a lot about what we give back to our taxpayers here in Clearwater. You know, there's a lot of things that we can improve on, roads, sidewalks. Vote for me, I'll keep it up, I'm giving you what you deserve in Clearwater.
As I've said a number of different times, I am for the people, I am for the resident. I think the resident has been overlooked. I think the resident needs to hear more. I think that you should vote for me because one of the reasons I care. I care, I care. I've been used to a number of difficult problems. In fact, we used to have a saying, there are a lot of difficult problems. There are no simple solutions, only intelligent decisions. And those take a lot of work. I'm, I'm used to looking at things from a number of different ways. I want to represent you. I have some plans and that I think we can put in place really quick to start accomplishing some of those goals. Gary Lee, sequel.
Again, my name is Miranda Douglas and I am your candidate for seat four. I want to say that I am here to represent the residents. I am here to represent the diversity of our residents and our needs. I really want to make sure that you all feel like you have someone that you can connect with and depend on in the council. I do also have a vision for Clearwater and that vision includes community inclusion, representation, bringing diversity and more passion to the council. I want to continue being a local advocate and champion for our businesses and making sure that Clearwater is a place where local families can thrive. And I look forward to representing you as the representative for seat four on the city council.
I'd like to stand and own up at the end because my name is Jonathan Rooney. I love Clearwater. I'm an advocate for disenfranchised, those who have left behind, those who have been marginalized. I'm going to hammer that to, 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 to all the way home. I believe in communities. I believe that we need to support diverse communities. And we don't need to do it with lip service, we don't need to do it with proclamations. I did, the worst, the thing that bothers me the worst is when people show up to every function, but when it's time to spend dollars, we don't have the money. I would guarantee you that when it's time to put my money where my mouth is, I would do exactly what I can do as a member of the council.
Thank you everyone for tuning in tonight online and showing up in person here. So in me, you have a candidate who actually lives in Clearwater's neighborhoods, who has not accepted any campaign donations from developers or special interests and who has a proven track record of standing up to Scientology. We didn't talk about Scientology tonight and that's fine, doesn't have to be the main topic of every discussion. But on March fifteenth, we will either get two candidates who actually represent meaningful change or we will get two status quo council members who just represent more of the same. If you want a council member who will passionately defend and represent our neighborhoods and who will fight back against Scientology's takeover of our city, then I humbly ask for your vote on March fifteenth. Thank you.
I'm going to pivot and change things up. I am going to quote a man that I respect deeply and who is, I think, the wisest, one of the wisest men I know, and that's my father. Even with a fifth grade education, he was a great community leader. And I remember how he always so talked to people, people would listen. And he told me one time, "Use your words wisely. Use them to build, to motivate, to motivate, unite. But words without actions remain hollow." The last nine years, I've dedicated my life and my work to this city on every way, in every way that I could. And that counts for something. I walk the walk on five-inch heels, but I do it. So I'm asking you again for the privilege to serve you. And that is what I promise to do in every capacity that I can. And it is a service. Public service is a privilege and I deeply respect that. And I hope that you will vote for me on March fifteenth. Thank you.
Right on time. Few closing remarks for all of you guys. Obviously, a big thank you to all six of you for being here tonight, taking an hour of your time. To those that are watching us online, for those that are here as well, thank you guys so much because this is extremely important for our community. Again, at least, almost six thousand Hispanics and Latinos registered here in Clearwater. We want to remind you guys to get out and vote on March fifteen. And then we have some upcoming events as well that we want you guys to remember. So, our narrative is virtual or in person. It's going to be on Saturday, March twenty-sixth at eleven thirty a.m. And then we also have Puerto Rico Day in Tallahassee for the Puerto Ricans that are out there. La Mesa Morica is on March seventh, so we want to make sure that you guys know about that. One of our volunteers is also going to be posting that on the chat so that you guys can have all the information to that. And a reminder for those of you that are on Zoom, there is also going to be a survey and an opinion portal that you guys can kind of click on that chat, give your guys' opinion if you have any questions or concerns moving forward. That's your way to put that out there. But thank you guys so much for, for being here, for tuning in. So make sure that you get out and vote. Thank you guys.
Yeah.
If you don't have the people watch?
No, I know. We can find out later if there was a multiple.